Good evening, everyone. Happy April. Didn't feel like it outside when we all came in. I'd like to call the meeting, the regular meeting of the Farmington Board of Education for Tuesday, April 8, 2025, to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one. Thank you. We'll move on to item four on our agenda, the approval of minutes. First up is the approval of the February 1, 2025 BOE Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes as Presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is motion number two to approve the February 3, 2025 Board of Education Regular and Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes as Presented.
Motion, second.
Any conversation, I'm sorry, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then lastly, motion to approve the March 3, 2025 BOE Special Meeting Minutes as Presented.
Motion, second.
Any discussion on that? Just want to check something, guys. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? Okay, fair enough. Okay. Eight, zero, one. Okay.
Did you want to move up the profile?
Yeah.
Seven, zero, one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get that over with. Okay, I'd like a motion if we could, guys, given that our friends from Caver here, if we could rework our agenda a little bit and move item 6B up to make it five.
A. Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So we now have in front of us item 6B, the CAEB search firm. I'd like to invite Jack and Mary Down to present the results of the survey as it pertains to developing the leadership profile for our superintendent's search. Yes, please.
It's nice to see everybody again. Thank you. Thank you for accommodating us, moving it up on the agenda. That's very nice. We should start by saying what a pleasure it has been to get to know Farmington, its system, its students, its constituents, and the passion that people feel for education, the quality of education students receive is really noteworthy and exciting. We're going to go through the results of this, and we'll move through as quickly as we think is prudent, but giving as much information to the community as we can in the process. So you had, between March 17 and April 1, we had 14 interviews and focus groups and spoke through those with 66 people, and we had 260 people complete the survey. So especially through the survey, had some pretty robust participation. And I just want to give a shout out to Dee Baraski for really helping us spread the word, especially that last-minute push on the survey was terrific. So I'm on page three now of the profile. You had a total of 326 people participate, and you can see the breakdown. As far as the interviews and focus groups go, you had 20 administrators, 16 parents, the nine board members, only eight teachers, eight students. We had a fabulous, again, a fabulous group of students. You should be very proud. And then you see greater participation through the survey. So that was clearly an easier way for people to participate. With 152 parents there, 67 teachers, 25 community members, and then support staff as well. So what did we find from this? We'll start with strengths, and you'll note that we indicated how many times we heard each thing we talk about mentioned. By far, the most mentions were the strength of the teachers and administrators and staff in Farmington, the dedication, unwavering dedication to student success, relying on refining their teaching methods and collaborating with one another, embracing professional development, and really fostering a culture of lifelong learning. The administrators, including district leadership, really worked to support staff, providing resources, and encouraging a spirit of innovation in the district. I can't tell you how rare that spirit of innovation is to find. And there's just a passion for education in every classroom. The next most mentioned was academic excellence and rigor, and there were 50, sorry, 70 people who mentioned that, with your high academic standards. Oh, Jack, I was going to let you talk about that first one. I'm sorry. Did you want to say anything?
Not a problem at all. I want to reiterate some things that Mary had said. Excuse me. First of all, it's an honor and a privilege to help you people, help the Board of Education identify the next superintendent of Farmington schools. We have come to know so much about Farmington with interviewing parents, focus groups, residents, teachers, administrators, Board of Ed. And I have to tell you, my best day was interviewing the kids. You should be so proud of those kids. They can speak to the global models, they can speak to the common cores, they can speak to so much, I had to ask them if they'd been brainwashed. They knew I was absolutely kidding. They were just very, very sharp, and we were assured that it was a cross-section of that school. So I want to also let you know, Mary and I look at the data through slightly different eyes. I'm looking at it as a superintendent retired and as a candidate. What will it feel like to apply for this job? And I want you also to know that Mary is incredible in analysis of data, and the amount of time that she puts in. I'm looking at all of the survey, all of the focus groups, all of the data, is just incredible. So if you don't like it, it isn't her fault. It's really what came in the door. And if you do like it, it is her fault because she's written it. In any event, I'm pleased to be here and very enthusiastic about helping you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. So in terms of academic rigor, you know you have extraordinarily high standards for academics here, and want to make sure, I mean, it's so interesting even to hear the students knowing that they should be pushing themselves. They articulated that with us. That is a spirit throughout the community. And you know your graduates leave really well-prepared for higher education, with many attending top schools, and because of your commitment to that academic rigor. The next most mentioned was innovation and willingness to try new approaches. I actually had an, I was traveling around the country at one point in my career, and I would often ask mass state meetings of school board members how many of them felt like their school districts were innovative hubs, and no hands would go up in thousands of people in the audience. And I think that Farmington should be incredibly proud of that spirit of innovation that's alive here, with forward-thinking approaches to education, cutting-edge instructional methods and technology, project-based learning initiatives, with students really tackling real-world problems and working collaboratively to come up with solutions. So next is diversity, and you'll hear some challenges in the next section as well, and it's often the case, and you will find, that there are strengths that have challenges as well. This community is more diverse than I think most people appreciate who are not in Farmington, and people, everybody we spoke with talked of valuing that diversity and the importance of cultivating an inclusive environment, where every student feels seen and supported. Next was the strong community and parental involvement with 32 mentions, and the partnership between the schools and the community, parents deeply invested in their students' education, support that you receive from local businesses and organizations, which helps students by giving them mentoring programs and internship opportunities, and students have both the academic and real-world experiences as a result, and the culture of shared responsibility between the schools and the community. 25 mentioned, and you'll know that, note that this is cited as a challenge as well, but special education and support services, with a real dedication to meeting the unique needs of each student, and teachers collaborating between special ed and general ed to ensure that the classrooms are inclusive of all students so that they thrive. There were 20 mentions of your music, arts, and extracurricular activities. You clearly nurture creativity, you have an outstanding selection of music, arts, and extracurricular programs, broad range of clubs and athletics, and a lot of participation in those. So students are developing their leadership skills, their sense of teamwork, and their personal passions outside of academics. Next, with 20 mentions, was the global citizenship and holistic education. And you focus on ensuring that your students are compassionate and globally aware, integrating social and emotional learning across all grade levels. I noticed what looks like one of your tools up on the whiteboard here at work, that people talked about going into kindergarten and see some mood meters, and then seeing the appropriate age level corollary at the high school level. You hit me anytime you want to say something.
I changed everything I want to say after reading that board.
Okay. So you'll jump in. Yeah.
I would just make the point that we're overlooking at strengths, and you wouldn't be here if you needed to have someone tell you about the strengths of this place. If you don't know it, there's something wrong, because it's unusual. It's got a spirit of wonder, and we're happy to talk about some of that, but I think the challenges and the characteristics that you're looking for might be worth spending more time on.
Okay. So I'll move quickly through the rest of your strengths. Sorry. So obviously, you have a state-of-the-art high school, this room. I mean, how many schools have black box theaters? My son would have loved this. And people in general, you'll hear negative about some of your schools, but that in general, they're well-maintained and comfortable and secure, and a safe and positive learning environment, you know, a welcoming environment with strong emphasis on mental health, with counseling services and wellness programs, and in general, a thriving community that nurtures curiosity, resilience, and a love of lifelong learning. Okay? On to, yeah?
I try to look at all of the data from a perspective of student services, how are you doing with student services, curriculum and instruction, how are you doing with curriculum and instruction, how are you doing with finance? The things that I would look for if I were a candidate here, and 30 years younger, but that's another story. I, of course, well, I've already told Bill that the superintendency is an easy job, and Kathy's had it made, and I think he knows and I know what a joke that is. I'm happy to talk with you about what I see as the challenges. Thank you.
Yeah. And as we start considering the challenges, I would also just emphasize how, I know you know how much you have to be proud of, and you know how large Kathy's shoes are to fill. It's going to be challenging to find the right person to move into that role. But take these challenges in the spirit that I think Farmington demonstrates, which is you're never complacent, right? You're always pushing yourself to grow, and so this is in the spirit of continuous improvement. The first, the most mentioned, and I think this did not come up, I will say, in our focus groups and interviews, we compared notes and did not recall this really coming up, so it must really have, it really was through the survey that special ed came up as a major concern, with 44 mentions. And the main concern is increasing, is funding. And there was mention of staff shortages and some high turnover rates, and the need for an inclusive and supportive system, and greater collaboration. It was mentioned as a strength, but it's also mentioned here as a challenge, the collaboration between special ed and general ed teachers. The next mentioned was teacher retention and morale. I have to tell you that Farmington is not unique in having this mentioned, and I have found that in the aftermath of COVID, this is almost always right up there as a top challenge. But some people, I'm 42, talked about teachers feeling overworked and undervalued, that push is, and I actually was just at a conference where people were talking about having this kind of a culture, a culture where everybody is working really hard and really pushing, and how sometimes it's, the stress is a little too much. And in the aftermath of COVID, that stress is burning out some people. So just something for the next leader to be aware of.
Let me address that one, too, there. I think what's happening in Farmington is the striving for excellence is enormous, both on kids, on teachers, and on administrators, and every group praises all of those. So there's no, obviously, weak chain. I think that if teachers are burning out, and I think that's happening nationally, maybe you do this, I would encourage governance, the governance level, to have exit interviews and find out why people are leaving. They'll be honest.
You do?
Pardon me?
No, I'm asking.
You do, you do. Okay. I think that's important to know, because obviously, some are retiring, some leave the profession, some go for where there's more money, but at least it's important to know. I think the, I tend to think that the interest, the level of work, the level of effort is enormous, and I think it's self-generated. I don't think it's coming at them, or they would be more critical of leadership, and they aren't. I think there's a self-generated desire for excellence, and you can't get it better than that.
Yeah. We also heard about the Farmington Way, and that came up in terms of the next challenge, which is there's concern that there won't be sufficient resources, especially since what we understand of the Farmington Way is you provide that excellence and you do it on a shoestring, you budget, you're not squandering any nickels in this community. And federal and state funding cuts are a concern, local reluctance to increase education spending, and the pressure on school resources came up, especially in special ed. So those two are kind of linked, but the recognition that you get great service on very low budgets. The next was student behavior and discipline. This is another one, which will be no surprise to you, is true across, across the country, again, in the aftermath of COVID. Behavioral issues and disruptive classrooms have been a concern, and people are looking for enforceable behavior standards with additional resources to support the social and emotional learning of students. Next mentioned, and this was a strength, was diversity, with 35 mentioned it as a strength, and 31 were mainly expressing concern that the new leader understand how important it is that the schools continue their efforts to ensure that all students arriving at your door, your doorsteps are valued, regardless of where they come from, and the need for someone who's going to actively support and expand initiatives to promote that sense of belonging. Next was high expectations as a challenge, the pressure on educators to balance the academic rigor with cultural and political considerations, just the importance that the schools stay focused on high-quality curriculum that prepares students for the future. And you, again, hit me if you want to say anything else. The next mentioned was parent-student expectations and community involvement. This is another factor that we've seen growing tremendously, and that is parents challenging authority and challenging expertise of staff. This is not unique to Farmington, it is happening in other places as well, people presenting conflicts over curriculum, over discipline, over school policies. And so it's important to find ways to, you know, make sure that there's strong trust, clear behavioral expectations, and clear discipline policies that protect students and educators. Parents would like to see transparency and communication, and an active role in their children's education, which we know many believe that you were providing very well.
Mary, maybe I could just add one perspective. You guys have an incredible community with skills, articulation. I'm sure at times you'd like to say, I wish you didn't talk so well or much, but you've got a lot of brilliance out there that will come to bear as they always do. When people have great expectations, that's wonderful. You never attain it. The second you attain it, you need somebody else to come in and take over. And I think you've got people that want great expectations, want high achievement, want excellence. That, from my perspective, is what's most desperately needed in any challenge, to find people that absolutely have a vision of excellence, that they want excellence. And if people don't mention also love of kids, you say next. Pardon me.
And now, we also talked about the next item as a strength of facilities and infrastructure. There are 23 respondents who talked about aging buildings, and we know that that, you know that that's true at the elementary level especially, and some outdated facilities hindering that, the learning experience, and the importance of prioritizing facility upgrades moving forward. There were 19 people who specifically mentioned mental health and student well-being. Students and teachers have been dealing with increased mental health challenges, as you know, with a high academic pressure and social stress, there are, and post-COVID, there is some sense of high anxiety and burnout, and the need potentially to expand those health resources we know you've been providing. Now, this has really comes up again here, political influence on education. It's referenced in a prior section, but just the importance of staying, for this new leader especially, to ensure that evident, the education strategies are evidence-based, that political agendas are not interfering with that, and that you're keeping education above politics and supporting students receiving the best possible learning experience. Next mentioned, did you want to say something?
Well, just there's so much happening in Farmington that people are terrified that it might change.
Yeah.
Some things have to change always, because the world and the planet is changing. But you've got so many things that are going so right, a lot of the people internally are terrified that who can fill those shoes, who can take it to the next level, and you've had turnover. So that there is a dilemma of what has to be maintained and supported, and what can change. The fact that you're in this building, we've been at a lot of school systems lately, and people are proposing high schools that cost two and three times more than this one. You've done an extraordinary job, and I know you've got elementaries to deal with, so there's going to be challenges along that line. But you've done a phenomenal job, and it needs to be made, that part needs to be maintained.
So there were 17 mentions of parents, some parents, teachers, and students feeling a little disconnected from decision-making processes, and the administrators are just encouraged to make sure that they're actively engaging with constituents and really listening to concerns. There were 13 mentions of AI and social media as a challenge. Surprise, surprise.
Confess.
Yeah. I mean, if it weren't for ChatGPT, you would not be reading a report right now, because it is, although all the data that went into it is only Farmington data, there's no way that all those data, especially from the survey, could be sorted to, and themes generated. So they have been, it, I mean, there are wonderful educational benefits, and there are major educational concerns, as you well know, that people are just wanting the new leader to be mindful of. So that's it for your challenges.
Any questions?
Do you want to stop there for a moment?
Just for a moment, we'll get to characters.
You want us to move faster?
Are there any questions on strengths, challenges?
I can represent you, there's quite a few challenges, but before we get open it up, so I just want to make sure you end at the end there. You accumulated all the data, and you represented, I'm sorry, and you presented the strengths and challenges through chat. So these are summaries provided by ChatGPT? Or is this stuff that you drafted?
Both.
Okay.
It's both.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm going to open it up. We'll start on that side. James?
I guess my, one question is one thing I was thinking of, is the timing of all of this, and like some of the themes that come through. What's the concern with like the recency bias? Right? We just had, and this is right, wrong, and different, not trying to get political, but obviously, we had a change in administration in January, a lot of turmoil, a lot of things have been said, done, things still to come. I think some of that comes out in this report. So had this been done six months ago, six months from now, would it look different? Would it be different? So I guess wanted to get your comments on that.
You probably have a better sense of that context than we do, and I think that's an astute point. So any survey or any meeting with staff is rooted in a moment in time, right? So I think that's a very legitimate observation.
James, if I could take a little shot at it, I think Kathy's done amazingly well navigating Farmington through political fiascos.
I don't disagree.
As I said to someone in another town, you sure don't get a candidate sitting out there and say, so how do you feel about DEI? You know, because everybody means something different by those three letters. How do you deal with kids, and deal with instruction, and deal with curriculum, and not deal with politics? I think you've done wonderfully at that, and you all deserve credit for it. Your governance team is there, the administrators are there, nobody was wrestling with the issues that you raised. Thank God. So I think that's part of the thing of needing to maintain that distance. We see some places that just get buried in trivia, or viciousness, or Thanksgiving dinner with relatives, you know, that you can't have certain things. My wife has a list of things that I can't talk about. She always has. No, never mind. It's a great question, and it's difficult to navigate. Somehow, Farmington has navigated it very well, and I leave credit where I believe credit is due. And that needs to be maintained. You don't get buried in national politics or in, I don't know. Did we answer that, James? I think that's it.
Yeah, I just wanted the commentary on just the thought behind, you know, the last couple of weeks, right? This was done from mid-March until, you know, a week ago.
Yeah.
You know, and thinking in my head of what's happened during that timeframe, when some of this, some of these answers, responses could have been influenced by that. I was just curious, you know, what your thoughts were on it.
We certainly didn't detect, I don't think we detected a real political strife among your parent, among different groups.
Not during focus groups. So people may have saved that for the survey.
Yep.
Good job, I'm sure.
That's okay. I was just going to ask, and some of us were talking about it before. In terms of response rate that this is, how would you benchmark that from other, you know, searches that you've done? Is this a good response rate? Is this above average, below average?
It's above average and probably just about right for your size.
Okay, so on a percentage wise, you would say this is a good amount percentage of people. Because, you know, we were thinking of it in terms of it's a it's a good amount of people. But then, based on how many families and students there are, you know, of course, it seems low, knowing that these things are always skew a little bit lower than you would hope. So percentage wise, you do feel it's good.
I would say we were disappointed in some of the turnout for focus groups in particular. I think one problem was we didn't know that there were parent teacher conferences going on when one of the focus groups was offered. But there are always going to be challenges for parents to get there. I think what was most important was that they had the opportunity to participate. And those who did brought a lot of wisdom. So.
And if I could, one perspective is sometimes it is the quality and sometimes it's the quantity. This isn't a research based number of people. We think there's certain people that are more apt to answer the questions or fill out the survey. On the other hand, we've had focus groups in other communities where one person shows up, and the conversation is positively brilliant. Someone who really understands the situation of what's happening. So we didn't find a weakness in the data. Some of it is might hurt a little bit. Some of it might be very, you should be very proud of it. But I think it's real. I think that most of what's here is representative of the Farmington community.
Thank you.
I think you touched upon this, but a couple of areas where we had strengths, and then we have the weaknesses around, you know, special education and the teacher retention. I think that's kind of nationally, right? I think from a budget and financial constraints, I think we're very fortunate here. We have a great relationship, I think, around. What concerned me was around the local reluctance to the increase in education spending. I think we work hand in hand with our town and to get, you know, the allocations that we need and do adjustments. But I think there is definitely a good relationship there. So that was kind of a little bit of a surprise there. So maybe more of education or I know we're very transparent in the process. So I think that's an area that I could take and understand that we need some maybe folks who spoke to that in maybe the survey of that number of results was needed more transparency or understanding of the process, but I was just a surprise.
Everybody sees they're part of the elephant. And very few people, and you are exceptional, have to see the whole elephant. You have to know that the basketball team has some bearing on math and English. The caliber of the school, whether or not the lawns mode has an effect on whether or not the population thinks it's excellence going on in that building or they aren't competent. So there's a you see a lot more than a lot of people that come with a relatively narrow perspective. And then they get on the Board of Ed and they say, my God, I thought I was just here to worry about the band. You're telling me I got to worry about scores, placements, HR? Yeah, it's 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 a big job and a big image. And, you know, we see the people and some of the data will show a narrowness of perspective. You expect it. And we had one candidate that said, I can talk to you about high school. I can talk to you about elementary school. I don't know what the hell goes on in the middle school. And it's a candidate for a superintendency. Middle school is a different planet. Elementary is very different than high. And somehow you need people that know it all, that can really relate to it all.
I would also just say that I I think there is great appreciation for that collaborative approach between the schools and the town. The Farmington way is where we heard about the reluctance too. So the Farmington way is we want the excellence and we want it to be at the lowest possible cost and that that's putting pressure on people. So that's what we heard. Any other questions before we move on?
It's not really a question. It's more of a commentary and a little bit of what everybody said so far. You took some of my questions. I guess what I struggle with, and I know you touched on it a little bit, is that there's such that there's contradictory information between the strengths and the challenges. And in looking at the strengths, there were there's a lot of positive. The numbers are higher there too, in terms of the mentions. And I just struggle with the narrative, like, how do you? How do you talk about Farmington in a way that's? I agree there. There's some challenges, people. Whether what they said is true or not true, this is how they feel. But, you know, I don't want any candidate to look at Farmington as like, we don't have like rampant discipline issues throughout the school district, you know, or we do a lot to support social and emotional learning. We do a lot to support special ed. And I don't, I I'm almost struggling with the word challenge because this is a school district that believes in and supports continuous improvement. There is, I've said this to you before, there is no ceiling to learning and excellence in Farmington, and that needs to come across. So some of the things that are listed in the challenges, I feel like those are things that we're continuously working on.
Right.
Our superintendent and our administrators, our teachers, they're top notch. And I think anything that is listed as a challenge, so to so to speak, would, we're either aware of it or those are things that they're continuously working on.
If I could, at one of the meetings, I said something. Challenges doesn't mean that you guys have goofed something. It's looking at the candidates, and they need to know. And you wrote it down when I said it, what will keep them awake at 2:30 in the morning? Because those are challenges. Passing a budget every year is a challenge. Hiring, firing, student discipline, it's always a superintendent's challenge. And all we are looking for is how do we communicate that to candidates? That this is likely stuff that you'll be wrestling with, that you'll have to deal with. Or to say to you, you need to look at candidates that you think can deal with those things. You can deal well with those things because that's the job of the superintendent of schools.
Yeah, but I think it's also important, and I think you mentioned this, that our community, parents, teachers, administrators, there are things that are very important that they want to have continue. And I guess it comes under a challenge. But like, to me, that's just part of the work and the continuous improvement in taking Farmington to the next level. And I guess that's where I started with, you know, the contradictions between the the strengths and the challenges and how you develop that narrative.
Well, it it comes out of our asking specifically about, so what are the challenges that are going to face this new person? And that's what the question was in the survey as well. So these are the responses we got from people. And you're right, the strengths had many more people meant like on teachers, for instance. And I, you know, people could see the same thing as both a strength and a challenge. Like that pushing, that sense of pushing for teachers is great. And the kids talking about pushing themselves is great. And and the challenge is to ensure that they are still emotionally healthy and and doing okay. So just to acknowledge that is where how I would interpret that.
I would only say, I think, looking at a candidate, you're looking at values. And you can't say, what are your values? But you're making judgments because that call every day is based on values. Beyond that, it's an understanding of excellence. As a graduate school instructor, I've asked 093 candidates, if you were God, you could do anything you wanted. What is your vision of excellence? And I was met frequently with dead silence. They said, no one ever asked us that before. If you don't have an image of of excellence, you don't belong here, you know? And and that's one of those things that I think is wonderful. What are your values? Do you like kids? If they don't mention kids, there's something wrong. They're quoting chapter one in some leadership book. If they don't say, this is what I think we should be like as a community. And if you don't buy what they think it should be like as a community, you say next. This will not be an easy job. There are a lot of towns that would be a lot easier because you are committed to excellence, academic excellence, sports excellence. We get the whole nine yards from people, and that's wonderful. When you get out of bed in the morning, forget the 2:30 concern. You're if you're happy that it's Monday because you get in there and you like it. That's what you want to do. That's your mission in life. That's what we want to find.
We also know your administration is lean and people work really hard. So that's another part of it.
I'm also right now. I think everybody else has really touched on it. And the two biggest challenges, you know, being special ed, that's statewide. And so is the teacher morale and that aspect. So. Who is ever coming in, that's going to keep them up at night, along with the budget.
And if they aren't, there's something wrong with them. You know, it is values. Ultimately, it's not just simple. It's what do you stand for? Do you really love kids? Do you want to work with children? Do you? And when when those high school kids know your superintendent, how the hell do you do it? You know, it's wonderful to hear that they've known her for 12 years. That's a difficult task. And you've got administrators that back it. Fortunately, they aren't saying, oh, God, it's Tuesday. Kathy will be around. We didn't hear that. We didn't hear that they dread that walk through. We hear that they look forward to the conversations, the discussions. And you can't ask for more than that. If it's a learning community, we're all learning as part of it. So I congratulate you on that, but recognize the strengths are frequently the weaknesses, and the weaknesses are the strengths. It can be both.
Thank you. I'm going to take a little time, not too much. I want to try to. So I saw this in very different perspective. But I conduct a lot of focus groups as a living. So, you know, I the I think I heard you say earlier, you know, it might sting a little bit. Yeah, that's, you know, when when we are asking the input of our community, sometimes we're going to hear things that we don't necessarily agree and we don't necessarily like. And I don't usually like to use the word challenges. I usually like to use the word as areas of improvement, you know, areas of growth, and that very much reflects our community and so forth. Just one point of clarification, I heard you throughout the when you were going through the strengths and then the areas of growth. You've mentioned at times you said you mentioned that it's 85 mentions or versus people or individuals. So is this mentions or were these 85 people that said that? I just want to clarify.
They were mentions.
Mentions. Okay, so these were themes that were found through the. Okay, so that's that's a very significant difference than saying 85 people. So the mentions is one. You know, so for the growths, to me, I mean, or the strengths, that is very. I see a lot of that is very true and from conversations I see from you hear from parents and staff and so forth. You know, I none of that is to me a surprise. It's just, it's just we do. We strive to not only be address our educational, the needs of the educational needs of our children or students, but we are also innovative. You know, the throughout this, what I, you know, I kept seeing about the behavioral health, the mental health. You know, we're piloting something that's and I see this across the state. There's many schools, many districts that are hungry to have a behavioral health, mental health partnership. That's an innovative approach, right? So I think those that these, there's a lot of great strengths here that so many other districts are so envious of. And so it's I'm not concerned that somebody coming in is going to say, oh, my gosh, because Farmington has a strong reputation of not only having that high caliber of, of, you know, looking for that excellence, right, and striving to improve our educate the education of our young of our students, but also that reputation of being innovative. That a reputation of being a team player to what Kathy has done, you know, all of that with the leadership. So I'm not concerned that somebody who would be looking to apply for this position is going to say, oh, my gosh, no, look at this. I'm not going there. In the sense of areas of, you know, areas of improvement, you know, as a few people mentioned, I think, James, you know, your point about the temperature, like the point in time, I think that that is a ripple effect.
Yeah.
I think that this is not not just Connecticut, you know, and I don't want to make it political. But I think that there is a lot of anticipation for the unknown. Like, I don't know what's going to happen. And as a parent, you know, in our community and a parent who's very much motivated and very active in their community, they and wants to see their child succeed educationally. These change, this unknown can be very much impactful to how I'm going to answer these questions.
Yeah, definitely.
I don't know how if my child is on the a 504 plan or if my child is classified as special education and IEP plan, and I'm hearing the national rhetoric about dismantling an educational department. Of course, I'm going to be concerned as to what's going to happen in my district for my child who's on an IEP plan or a 504 plan or has to have some educational accommodations. Of course. And so I think that there is in these areas of challenges, you're going to see both because I believe that that's probably the temperature concern and anticipation that parents are feeling, the community is feeling. You know, the retention and staff workforce, that's what we're hearing also across the one of the we're seeing many retire in the educational field. So yeah, that is a concern. If we're hearing that as a parent, okay, I want to I'm concerned or as an educator, I'm concerned about morale, and I'm concerned about retention of teachers, you know, are we okay? And then the last thing, the two things in regards to budget, I and no disrespect to the Board of Ed. I am on the board, we are on, you know, but I think we could do better in as a Board of Ed in communicating, going out to the community, going out to PTO meetings, going out to the schools to actually communicate about what's happening around. Because, yes, we put we post things. Yes, we invite for public comment. But this is we need more. We need to be engaging more out into the community to inform parents about the how we're striving to create a healthy budget. I don't think we're doing enough of that. So but I so I see these as areas of improvements. I think that this is this is actually, you know, a good space for us to take this. And it may sting a little bit, but I think we can learn from this.
I'll wrap it up. We talked about, Mary, about this document is going to essentially put out into the world what various stakeholders believe to be the challenges that the new person who's going to come into Kathy's position are going to have to face. And what I'm and while I agree with Erica that it's always good to get feedback that's that can be challenging to you and it can, you know, make you think, you know, perhaps in ways you've never thought of. There is some stuff in here, though, that is just not aligned with how we do things. And so what I would ask you is, as you go out into the world with this with this document, how do you tell a candidate? Well, there's people out there that think that local there's reluctance at the local level in terms of financial, you know, support. And when we know in the last two budgets, our budget's passed without any pushback from the council. So that that, you know, that's that's something that that's not necessarily accurate. But by the same token, historically, there have been issues in the past where this has been a battle. So I can understand that. Or the special ed piece, like Erica said, I mean, what we're doing in special ed is 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 cutting edge as any school district in the country. Yet, how does a parent, I'm sorry, how does how does a prospective candidate take away from reviewing these challenges that we are actually on the cutting edge? So walk me through how you're going to deal with these opinions that are authentic and reflect people's actual sentiments. And how do you reconcile that with the actual facts on the ground as you're trying to draw candidates into the into? candidates into the interview process?
I actually think it's potential fodder for the interview process to talk about the various perspectives about it and what you can even share, your perspective on it. And I don't, I don't think, honestly, that there's anything in this report that would deter a candidate from wanting to be here. I think, if anything, people would be very excited, except filling Kathy's shoes. Because it's always easier to find some, to follow somebody who hasn't been as successful. So it's, I do think that James is right, that, I mean, you think about where the state has been recently about its funding for special ed. And that likely drove a lot of this, which may also be why it wasn't in the interviews and focus groups, it was in the survey.
It happened around that time.
Yeah. So this document will help think about the candidates who are going to fit you most effectively, best match for you now. And it will give people a bit of a heads up. But it's fodder for further discussion, deeper understanding. You want to add to that?
Just that the document usually whips up interest among candidates. The applications are due tomorrow. So there's not going to be a whole lot of people that read the document and then decide if they want to apply in Farmington. They're going to have to have decided by tonight sometime, or maybe, maybe by a week ago. Yet, to help shape your interviewing process, your screening process, I think by then, candidates surely should have read it. And we really get quite positive comments from candidates during interviews, that this really helped me understand what the stakeholders are thinking. The stakeholders might be wrong. But the fact is, I just have relatively seldom heard, special ed is wonderful. In most cases, people are looking for more help. You know, and that's not a terrible thing to say. But, so, you know, I mean, you have to deal with that. And it's money. It's, I mean, that is a lot of money if you want to go one-on-one with a lot of kids. So just realize what role this can play. It's probably not going to be marketing Farmington to come and apply, because they won't get it until tomorrow.
I'll just end on this. And just kind of, what I want to say to Kathy and Veronica and Dan and DLC and the entire district is that, I think you heard tonight from our board, our concerns about how these challenges have been conveyed. But there's not one person here doesn't think we have the best school district in the state. There's not one person in this room or on this board that thinks you guys don't work as hard as you do and with extraordinary outcomes. Now, we're all proud of the work that you do on a daily basis. I just want to make sure that that's clear. And then we'll move forward.
Bill, I would say, I concur. And I think Jack does, too. I think that it has been incredible to see what has happened here and to, to know how it's affected students. And we need to reflect what we hear through this process. Because you do have people out there who may be misinformed but have concerns. So can take it from there.
You want to go with the profile?
I'm sorry?
Want to go with the profile? Profile?
Go on, yes. So, so we asked, the first couple of pages, so we're on pages 10 and 11, the first two pages are really right out of the survey. And of your participants in the survey, we looked at both their number one characteristic that they, expertise that they'd like to see in a new leader. And then added the top three choices that people expressed. And you'll see, building trusting relationships with students, staff and community is by far number one of the first choice. I will say the next one is one, and this is really reflective of this community. We never see this as number two. But it was, has a broad base of knowledge of educational issues and practices, is the second most desirable expertise. And then, in terms of first choices, sharing that district-wide vision of excellence, I'll tell you, it's all too rare that we see that one up in the top three. So I think those really are reflective of where you are and what's important to the community. Now, what changes a little bit, and I think it's usually number one or two, is communicates and collaborates effectively. And I think that's not number one or number two in your first choices, or number three, because you do it so well. So there's an expectation of that. In just about every other search I've done, that's been in the top three. It is in the top three when you go to the top three choices. But I just think it's, that's all very interesting and unique to you and a real, a really nice reflection on you. In terms of qualities, the top choice, and again, this is all too rarely, the number one, is keeping students' growth and well-being the primary focus. Trustworthy, honest and respectful. And then they flip a little bit between first choice and top three choices. Accessible, approachable and visible. So if we take that and go into, and let's go into a little detail about what each of those means, including the comments from your survey and interview participants on page 12. You want somebody who's building those trusting relationships across the board, students to community, creating supportive and authentic environment, trust, communication, empathy at the core, recognize the expertise of teachers and support staff, consider the effects of intense work, being transparent in communications, being supportive and firm, especially with parents or students who challenge educators. Again, that's, that may come out of a moment in time, James. Somebody who listens to all voices and ensures that students, staff and parents feel valued and heard and prioritizes community engagement. In terms of broad base of knowledge and educational issues, this person has to be forward-thinking with a proven track record and knowledge about staffing schools, really strong and instructional leadership. Again, special ed comes up here in terms of a strong background in special ed, knowledge about district needs and the obligations that you have to meet students' needs. This person really has to be visionary and a great problem solver. Again, somebody who communicates and collaborates with, who's deeply connected to people, really loves people and is able to unite constituents, focused on community engagement, communication skills and collaboration. And then, again, the district-wide vision of excellence and innovative instruction with high expectations for all students and a real focus on excellence. People don't want to be swung away from the direction you're heading. They want the person to come in and understand, first of all, but, and share your vision and then, and then grow wherever you're going next, together with the community. So somebody who supports innovative instruction. And again, keeps student growth and well-being the primary focus, prioritizing student growth in a safe and nurturing environment, balancing high expectations with support for students, encouraging accountability and personal growth, school safety policies that maintain firm discipline regarding student behavior, supporting teachers in maintaining order. Again, somebody who's accessible and approachable and visible. And somebody of the utmost ethics and integrity, committed to standing up for what's right in the face of controversy, respectful, honest and transparent, and trust and support staff. So somebody who inspires trust and demonstrates leadership, ensuring that the needs of students are always the forefront of decision-making. To run through those quickly.
That's good, thank you.
You know, I would only add that, most of those characteristics, a person can't come in here in a month and build them. Trusting relationships is something that's got to be constant work on. And, you know, I used to joke that superintendents would say, 10 months a year, we're great. And then, when it's budget time, oh, we got desperate needs. Believability, reliability, honesty is really important. And you can't say, we're golden, but we need an 8% budget. How do you, how do you find that excellence in a person? How do you make those judgments? You know how they say that people don't care what you know until they know that you care? How do you make your judgments with these candidates to know that they would put their heart on the line, to know that they would care deeply for every kid in town? That's the judgment. Do they have an image or an idea of what excellence looks like? Do they really know, or do they think excellence means everybody stays off my back? No. You're looking for a leader, a collaborative leader, someone that's into participative leadership, not a dictator. And that's a challenge. And that's what we're, hopefully, can help you find and choose.
Just going to open up real quick. Any last questions from the board? Okay, do you need confidentiality statements?
Yes.
Okay.
So that we can share applications.
Right, right. If anybody has them, you can give them up.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. You can't see an application until it's filled out.
Right. So, Andre, you'll send over?
Yeah. I have, almost everybody's on my printer at home. I'm sorry, so I will email them to you. I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, this is stuff that I don't mind.
Mary, I have mine. Andre doesn't have mine. You want to take it?
I'm okay with that.
Thanks. Thank you.
I'll try to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, onto our next item on the agenda. Back to item five, this will be 5B, it'll be elementary enrollment committee update. Kathy, superintendent's report.
So I'll just begin. March is Board of Education Appreciation Month, so we have some items for you, a nice scarf. We were going to give this to you in March, but it's like February today, so you can enjoy the scarf. We also, Dee has designed this beautiful new folder for our recruitment and for other events. And we included this beautiful, lovely map of Farmington that was done by the town. And so, hope that you enjoy this.
Sarah May.
Yes.
Oh, she's so good.
Yeah. Well, the town did the map, but Dee did the fold. So, all right. So on the elementary enrollment update, Dan has been leading the enrollment, the elementary enrollment internal group to prepare for the transition of families from East Farms to Noah Wallace. We've accomplished a great deal. I just want to recognize everyone who's been working so hard on this project of ours. You know, Matt, Sam, we have Brian, Zerio as part of it, our two principals, Nicole and Carrie and Veronica. And we could just go on and on with everyone who's involved and just trying to do everything we possibly can to make this a joyous and wonderful, welcoming transition. And so Dan's going to provide an update of what we're working on now and then any next steps we have. I just do want to highlight how many events the families have already participated in at Noah Wallace. Carrie has invited them to all events and they've had some special events just for those families as well.
Thanks. So, yeah, we're moving along and I think the process is going very well. Currently, we have approximately 60 students at East Farms planning on transitioning to Noah Wallace. There is some flexibility with our enrollment, so we have been able to reach out to current third-grade families. And, you know, if they allow them to make a request per kind of board policy, that if they want to remain there just for that fourth year, so they're not kind of jumping, you know, right from there to Westwood, if they can provide their own transportation. And so we've got some of those requests and the goal is, probably later this week, next week, we'll be able to respond to really all the requests that we've received at this point and making sure, obviously, we're balancing enrollment between the two schools. You know, as Kathy said, really, a lot of people have done such a great job, really want to highlight the collaboration between Nicole Weber and Carrie Huber as far as kind of the communication and the coordinating there. They really kind of helped making that a smooth transition. Also, I want to highlight Kristen Wilder, who's our family engagement facility, who reached out to every family to talk to them, make sure they were aware, see if they had any questions, any concerns, and really did a great job kind of documenting that and really sharing that across the board. So we can kind of look at that and address some concerns there. So I really want to give her some kudos. So just part of that transition, Noah Wallace, on February 13th, they did host an open house where about the 60 families, about 50 of them attended. They had, Noah Wallace had some student ambassadors kind of give the families tours of the building, even got a chance in the gym to do some cosmic bowling, which was a big hit. And so they were kind of working through there. And then for the remaining, remainder of the year, as Kathy had mentioned, too, the PTO has invited all those families to Noah Wallace events. And so even, I was talking to Carrie this morning, they had an event over at Bushnell at the Carousel, the Carousel there at Bushnell Park. And there was a handful of current East Farms families who participated in that. So kind of already starting that transition, getting to know, you know, new students and things there. So we thought that was really wonderful. And there's going to be another playground play date at a date to be determined. They're kind of waiting for the weather to get a little bit better. But once again, just continually to offer those opportunities to help with that transition. And then just from an infrastructure perspective, we continue to work on preparing Noah Wallace and Westwood's. Westwood's is in line to create a pre-K playscape. The designs have all been created at this point. And so now, just finishing the, kind of the bidding process and, but that should be slated to get done and hopefully done by early summer. So we have plenty of time with that transition. And also, we have Sam Kapatrick, who's, you know, helping with, obviously, the Westwood's there, but also working with the team, looking at the bathrooms at Westwood's, because ideally designed for fifth, sixth grades, and now we're trying to get them down for the pre-K. So there's some, you know, some plumbing that needs to get lowered and some sinks that kind of get lowered and looking at those options that are there. And so same thing, having that. And we're really kind of looking to be able to do most of that within our internal staff to be able to do that. And then, you know, working on the logistics piece of things, you know, making sure that the teachers and staff have boxes to be able to move things from one location to the other, you know, timelines and all those, and also taking advantage of the classrooms so that, you know, when, once we empty a classroom, you know, it'd be a great chance for us to be able to kind of put some new carpeting in some of them, put some new fresh coat of paint on there. So really looking to be able to kind of do some upgrading there. And then finally, just looking to also do some furniture purchasing. You know, Matt, Sam, myself, we did a tour of actually all the elementary buildings to see, okay, we're going to need a set of second grade furniture here, we might need a first grade furniture here, we have an extra one there. Just really kind of looking to see what our current inventory is, but then at the same time, you know, kind of, like you said, make any purchases for where any gaps there might be. So, so really just, you know, moving along. And once again, a lot of logistical things going in there, but overall, I think it's going smooth and all the phases should be ready for a great opening of the 25, 26 year. Happy to answer any questions?
I was just going to mention that maybe you want to also talk about the transition to the preschool, because Katie Bloor has been a really instrumental part of all this, too.
Yeah, Katie's been great, you know, and I think, once again, part of that collaboration is talking with, is, you know, Katie really is kind of talking with Carrie a lot and kind of, hey, what can I expect? How, you know, how do I, you know, this? She's been really great about space and looking at that space and trying to figure out, okay, you're happy to, you know, take this space, but some of that is, okay, so now where I move, you know, this staff and really being, you know, really flexible and creative about, and being really welcoming to having this program, join them. And even thinking about the curricular possibilities, right, of how do we incorporate, you know, having the fifth grade, sixth graders kind of working there, mentoring and different pieces. So, yeah, so Katie's also done, you know, a fabulous job, kind of, you know, making sure that we have a smooth transition.
Questions?
I know you mentioned for the East Farms Noah Wallace transition, that you reached out to the third grade families because of that one. that you reached out to the third-grade families because of that one year. But I know last year, when this was all coming about, there was a lot of, like, concerned parents, not necessarily third graders, just in general. And we had advised them, you know, there's a policy that they could apply for the exemption. Have we received a lot of those exemptions? Like, have we received a large number or a small number? Are we going to meet those exemptions? Or can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, so the largest portion of requests have come from the current third-grade families, you know, going, you know, going to fourth grade, you know, that piece of it. There's probably been a handful of, you know, K-1, 2 requests in there. And so same thing, we're going to kind of take a look at those to see, you know, if we'll be able to honor the requests just because of, once again, whether it's class, balancing class sizes and, you know, and other factors that might play a role. So hopefully, but, you know, like I said, there haven't been as many there. We're, you know, what was interesting is from, you know, kind of Kristin's takeaway. And, you know, this is the, probably the best part about Farmington because they're all great elementary schools, right? So, you know, a lot of the families were, and for some of them too, because of the, you know, kind of the redrawing of the maps, Noah Wallace is going to be closer to where they live. So some of them were even excited about that possibility of like, oh, this is going to be great. You know, shorter bus drive, shorter there. So really, a decent portion of them, once they kind of processed through it, started getting exciting. And then the open house, you know, made them feel very welcome. And so once again, anytime you have to change, anytime you have any type of thing, there's always going to be a little bit of anxiety and trepidation, or really sometimes a change, a lot of anxiety. But, you know, the staff has really done a wonderful job to try to, you know, honor some of that anxiety and trepidation and really kind of help them with that piece of it. So, but ultimately, yeah, there's been some, you know, requests, but, you know, not a lot. And then, like I said, we'll get those on a case-by-case basis to see if we're able to approve any of them.
Okay. And then anyone who does get, I'm calling an exemption, I don't know if that's the proper term, but they have to provide their own buses. There's no bus service.
Well, their own transportation.
Their own transportation.
Yes, transportation's completely on them just because it's just not feasible, you know, for two or three to have, you know, kind of two bus routes going to different schools in a, you know, kind of a similar location.
Okay, thank you.
You guys are... Sorry.
Yeah, my question was just, do you have a timeline for when you're going to make decisions about this?
So the goal is going to be, hopefully, hopefully by either the end of this week or early next week, we'll be able to do that because, you know, the elementary principals, at this point, right after April vacation, start looking at, you know, the preplacement and kind of start having some of those conversations. So it is important for them to be able to, you know, have that information. You know, at the same time, we're waiting a little bit because, once again, if, depending on the requests you get, kind of determines it, right? If all of a sudden you get a lot more requests, then there might get to a point where now we can't honor the requests because it's going to put an undue burden on maybe a grade level at either East Farms, Noah Wallace, or so on. So you're trying to get a good sense of what that number is so you can make, so we don't unintentionally, as I said, put some pressure at one of the school's specific grade level.
One more question. So it sounds like the bulk of the requests are coming from the third grade, the current third grade. Do you have a sense that if you're going to be able to accommodate these requests, would it be for all or just partial?
I'm cautious...
It's a tough question.
No, 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 it's fine.
I know.
I am, I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to honor the third, the current third-grade families to fourth grade. So, you know, barring, you know, a late rush of requests or some other factors that, to be honest, I couldn't even think of, at this point, I'm cautiously optimistic we will be able to honor those requests.
Thank you.
Edith?
Dan, this update's fantastic, so thank you. The question I had was around, were there or has there been any challenges that were unforeseen that kind of come up that have not been, you've not been able to resolve or not planned for in this whole transition and...
Yeah, no, you know, hats off to really, you know, I really want to give a lot of credit to the committee work that was done last year, you know, even before I got here, you know, as this kind of project that you kind of take ownership of. You know, the communication that occurred at this level and the meetings and, you know, the meetings, you know, that are still, you know, I was able to watch them on the website, right? So to feel really informed about the process, I think there was a really tremendous amount of transparency with the process. And so I think all those things really built a level of trust that's there. And so, and being able to have it articulated about, you know, the whys and everything there. You know, as far as, you know, you know, the interesting part is now looking at, you know, what I would probably say the, you know, to your, if I had to answer that question, some of the secondary things, we're kind of looking now, Noah Wallace actually might be benefiting from parking because you didn't realize how much staff is at pre-K. And so they'll probably get it. So then you worry a little bit, okay, well, you know, we get a little tight at Westwoods because of there. But I know there's a lot that's a little bit further out, you know. So those are some of the kind of like, you know, unexpected things. But I don't think anything that would be, you know, insurmountable in any way or anything that we're, you know, it's going to keep us from being able to meet that timeline. Just certain things that you're like, oh, that's an interesting thing that I don't know if we had really thought about. But overall, nothing like jumps out at me as a major concern.
Awesome, thank you.
Just have a, for pre-K, that's pre-K 3 and 4, right? Is that for the Westwoods? Pre-K?
Yeah, pre-K, yes.
Yeah. And what's the capacity for, how many students? What's that, is that going to be?
You know, I don't know what the final number is. I think right now it's going to be four classes that are going to be there, so, you know, I'm... Yeah. Yes.
I think it's 60 there.
In the sixties.
Yeah.
And then do we have already, our people, I know in the, when I remember when I, years ago, when I had pre-K here, and actually at Urban A. Robbins, they had it there. I know there was a waitlist, a waitlist. And so I don't know if that's still something that...
Yeah, so we're, we've done the lottery.
So...
Okay.
Yes, so we've gone through the, yeah, as we like to call the randomization process where we allowed, you know, for there. And that's another thing that, you know, from last year, you know, it's not as much with this. There were some feedback about that lottery system and the process in there. And so we took some of that feedback and incorporated that. And to this point, while I think, you know, obviously, you know, you're hoping to get in, even some families who weren't able to get in, we haven't gotten any, what I would say, you know, the angry emails, you know, just obviously disappointment. But they also know that, you know, there's this much demand for this many spots. And so I think they appreciated the modifications we did in that process to try to make that as transparent as possible. So that's another thing that, once again, a lot of that work was, you know, to be fair, was done, you know, last year and kind of in that transition.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Awesome. Looking forward to it.
So we just wanted to give a little update on the 2025, 2026 budget approval process. There is no advocacy at this point in the budget approval process on our part or anyone's part for that matter when it comes to the town or the Board of Ed. But we are, we just had our town hearing, our second town hearing last night. We will have a town meeting coming up, the Monday after vacation, April 24th, and then followed by an early May referendum, May 1st?
May 1st.
Yeah. And so Dan just wanted to provide an update. Our budget is, the operating budget is at a 4.65%, but there was some, there were some changes to the capital improvement, which we talked to all of you about, but we're, just wanted to make sure that we were keeping everyone informed.
Yeah, so really just, you know, as Kathy mentioned, we just had some of the changes to the capital planning from that. And so, once again, we took a look, we identified some of those areas in there. But, you know, we believe we'll be able to, you know, kind of not have that overall impact, you know, still be able to kind of continue to make the progress that we want on those pieces, so.
Anybody questions?
On the professional appointments, resignations, and retirements, this is the time of year that we start to see certified resignations for a variety of reasons. And it was mentioned, talking to individuals about the why. And by law, we do report that to the state, so that is something that we do as a district, all school districts do. Faculty might be leaving for promotions to other districts or positions in other districts. There are eight resignations in this meeting's report.
Okay. Deeper learning?
On the deeper learning, what you'll see is academic and music highlights, celebrations of learning, and learning that focuses on real-world connections aligned to our vision of the global citizen.
All right. Okay, next we're on to item 6 of our agenda, unfinished business. A, budget impact, budget update.
So, Dan?
Yeah. So a couple of things. Typically, I, you know, when I've done this before, I was kind of like, okay, really, nothing. You know, it's early on in the budget process. But now, as we're moving, you know, through, have a couple of pieces. One is, you know, not in the, we'll put it, not in the great news category. There was a lift over at East Farms Elementary School. It's kind of the one that's right there by the main entrance there that takes to the gym. That one had some issues, but kind of beyond repair. And so we had to put in an order for a new one. It had to cost about $50,000. And so we have that set up, lined up to go. That'll, right, they'll come in and do it right if school gets out and be able to kind of do that swap. We are going to be able to put that into our kind of major projects and do that so we don't need to go into capital to make that happen. So we're happy we're going to be able to at least kind of keep there and not have to kind of go into capital. So I'll kind of lead with that, but I'll lead to some better news. Where we are right now currently with budget is we're trending well. We'll talk a little bit more with the financials there. But we're trending well. And as you recall, at the time when the budget was created last year, we budgeted excess cost at about 59% because not expecting to know where it was. And so then when we, when the state comes out in, you know, I think it's around November, they let us know where it's at. And it was right, I think, at that like 60% piece. A lot of school districts who had, you know, planned for 65, some even 70, were, and had some difficulty there. And so the state looked at it, and as you may recall, the state put in about $40 million for the whole state to help with excess cost, and they moved that percentage up. So that was going to, for Farmington, come out to be about $300,000. We still haven't received that, you know, kind of the money there. And where we are budgeting-wise and feeling pretty good, we think that large chunk of money will, you know, we'll be able to have that kind of toward the end of the year. And so really, at this point, where we're anticipating is making a recommendation for something that, actually, Farmington, I don't believe has ever done, is create what's called a non-lapsing account. And so what that is, is the Board of Ed's allowed to roll up to a maximum of 2% of any excess money that's in a budget and put that in a non, so it could be specifically, has to be for educational purposes. And, you know, the thought process right now for that recommendation, where it lands and where that allotment is, considering where there's a lot of concern about federal funding and where it might happen, this could create a level of a buffer that if somewhere along lines, whether it's any of the grant, you know, some pieces in there that this could kind of help offset that piece. If not, as we all know, sometimes there's other surprises that come up and this can kind of help, you know, offset any surprises in that budget process. And so, you know, I'm not, you know, we don't have, obviously, we don't have an exact dollar figure now. We're kind of looking at, but that's kind of where we're, you know, where we're kind of recommending and looking to go with that. So that's just kind of want to, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, we'll be able to probably give you a more accurate number of the kind of what that recommendation would be. But just kind of want to put that on everyone's radar and see if anybody had any questions or thoughts.
I would just say that by way of context, the town has been able to do this for a long time. They have like these savings accounts, for lack of a better way to describe it. But school boards have not been able to do that. And that's as a result of recent legislation, right? That we can do this now.
Yes. Yeah, typically, at the, you know, at the end, and at the end of a budget season, anything that the Board of Education has left over gets turned over back to the town for the town to have that discretion as far as, you know, its use. In this case, like I said, the Board of Ed has the ability for up to 2% for this non-lapsing account, for specifically for education purposes.
Terrific.
You know, many of my colleagues have this and have had it. I would just say, going forward, there's a little caution with a non-lapsing account. It could be used to reduce a budget in a budget year, like the next budget. And then you're trying to make up for it a year later, and it could be pretty challenging. And a few of my colleagues have dealt with that. So I always, you know, would, that would be my caution going forward is, it's really there, in my opinion, for issues with probably the three big things that are really volatile for us, which is special education costs, issues with facilities. We just had an example of that, $50,000, not budgeted. It can be much larger than that for other issues. And certainly self-insurance can be a challenging and very volatile area. So when we think about those three big areas, that's really what I would look to when it comes to this. And with facilities, a lot of it is safety and security and things that can, you know, pop up that we need to address right away. But using it to then, you know, create a budget and lean on that can often have devastating effects in future years. So it's just something to keep in the back of your mind as you go forward with a non-lapsing account.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yes.
Dan, I just didn't hear what you said was at East Farms that you were replacing.
It's a lift?
Oh, it's a lift.
Oh, a lift.
Lift.
Thank you.
Dan, can I ask, because I was, I saw that in the weekend update once, and I was like thinking about it, like, have I seen it? I'm assuming it wasn't ADA compliant because they have that back entrance to the gym that's like outside. You know, the door that opens outside?
Yes, yeah.
And that doesn't have stairs. But is it, that wasn't, that wouldn't be enough? It had to be inside to go down? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's true. It has to be inside and accessible like every other...
Even though they could legally enter the gym without using stairs through the back entrance?
Correct.
It would require a student who needs to get to that same location to take a different route. And we want it to be accessible for all to take the same route. So those, I believe it probably happened when the school was reopened at one point and had to meet, you know, updated ADA requirements.
Yeah, I was just thinking through that when I saw that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Dan. Item 7A, annual audit report.
As you know, we engage with the town each year in an outside audit of our financial accounts, our financial processes. And Beth is here, our business manager, and Dan, they'll provide some highlights of our 2023, 2024... No, sorry, 2024... Wait, what did I say? 2023, 2024 fiscal year outside audit.
Right.
So I'd like to welcome Beth Haber, our business manager. You know, she does such a wonderful job, you know, really, for me, giving an opportunity to highlight some of our staff to kind of see, you know, their level of expertise and be able to talk a little bit about our audit. So I was excited to welcome her here.
So yes, it is the 23, 24 audit. And it was performed by PKF O'Connor Davies, who have been our auditors for the past few years. All Board of Ed members should have received copies of the federal single audit and the state's single audit report, as well as the comprehensive annual financial report. These reports can also be found on the FPS website under Finance and Operations page. You can click on the audit information, which is then linked to the town website. The town, the auditors do come to town council to give their presentation. So we'll just keep it to the highlights, which is that it was a clean audit. Information on grants can be found in the federal and state single audit. And information on some of our other funds, which all ended positively, can be found in the annual comprehensive financial report. So if anybody has any questions?
You know, just going to, I want to highlight and brag a little bit for Beth and Dawn and Kathy Sheldrick, Dawn Driggs and Kathy Sheldrick. The previous year report, there are, sometimes they give recommendations. The recommendations don't prevent you from getting a clean report. They're just recommendations as kind of best accounting practices. Some of the ones are a little bit challenging because when, you know, they're, I call them a small but mighty team in there. And so some of the things are about redundancies in there, and so some of those are challenges. But the year before, they had, I believe it was six recommendations. And then this year, three of those recommendations have been removed because they have been able to kind of meet those recommendations. So it's just down to a few recommendations with, once again, just more, you know, they would probably require more staffing to kind of create, you know, kind of these extra levels that while, you know, ideally would be best practices, you know, kind of there, you know, not preventing us from being able to do it. You know, kind of back to that report, you know, the town wants us to be able to do it at this level with as lean as possible. And so, you know, it would probably make us a little less lean to remove those three recommendations. But as I said, they don't prevent us from getting the clean report.
Another clean audit, Kathy.
Yes.
After all these years.
Number 16.
16 for 16. Undefeated.
I just want to also highlight... I just want to also highlight Beth and her great work. She has been really the steady in that office. We've had some changes and Beth has always been the stable force. She's someone I go to often and ask lots of questions and she always has all the answers. So I just thank her and the whole business team for their hard work and just their, their commitment to excellence in everything they do. So thanks, Beth.
Great job, Beth. Okay, I need a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 annual audit report as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up, Connecticut Healthy Food Certification.
So as a school district, we participate in the Connecticut Healthy Food Certification. Section 10-215F requires participants in the national school lunch program, including each local and regional Board of Ed, to take action annually to certify whether we are going to continue to be enrolled in the Healthy Food Certification Program. And Dan's going to answer any questions you may have about Connecticut Healthy Food Certification. Much of this is federally required, so it's in a lot of ways a bonus for us to have this at the state level as an additional source of funding.
Yeah, so I'm happy to take any questions. You know, as we kind of put there, you know, I would recommend for us to approve the Healthy Food Certification piece. And then if, if that is approved, then we go through and continue with the, the application process that I believe is due by June 1st is the, June 30th. So we have until June 30th for submit the, the application.
Anybody? Okay, I need a motion.
It's, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yes, it's a lot.
I need pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, I need a motion that required, this doesn't really.
I'll do it. Do you want me to do it?
Sure, go ahead. I'm not sure I read it, I'm not reading it right. Go ahead.
Yeah.
You take, you take a shot.
I move that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section 10-215F, the Farmington Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from, to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Okay, you need a motion for that?
Well, I moved for it, so you need a second.
Okay, I need a second thing.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're up again.
I'm up again, okay. I move that the Farmington Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One more.
All right. I move that the superintendent be authorized to sign the Healthy Food Certification Statement as presented, indicating the Farmington Public Schools will participate in the program for the 2025, 26 school year.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Good job, Andrea. Next up, 7C policy updates, Kathy.
Yeah, so we have a few. We met as a policy committee recently to go over these. So I tried to summarize them on this chart so you could see, policy 3514, point one is disposal, disposable obsolete or surplus equipment and materials. And really Shipman just did some revisions to this for more clarity and some small edits. The next two policies have to do with Governor Lamont's recently signed into law Public Act 25-1, which among other things addresses immigration enforcement activity in schools. So that is both 1250 visitors and 1420 and 1420A, school security and safety. On the Connecticut School Climate Policy, this is a pretty significant revision. In 2023, the General Assembly passed, passed legislation now codified at the Connecticut General Statute, section 10-222AA, making significant changes to statutory provisions related to bullying. I actually have a document that I just received today that just goes over a Q and A about this, what's required, you know, what is school climate, how do we define it? And a lot of this is already in place in our district. One of the requirements is restorative practices. We've been trained and our, our staff has been trained in that many years ago and that's something that we practice. And, you know, that is something that is very important within the school district. It's not something we use all the time. There are many different strategies we have when issues arise with students and our school climate, but we are in line with that already and in compliance. We already have a coordinator that, within safe schools, that requirement, and we also have our school climate specialists. And so there's a few changes to what we do right now, but it was a significant change in general when it comes to Connecticut and how we'll look at bullying in the future with challenging behaviors. That's going to be, that's a new term that is used a lot within this policy and within our administrative regulations. The CAPE actually was charged by the legislators to create the policy and Shipman created the administrative regulations for us. On graduation requirements, there's a slight edit to adhere to revised FAFSA timeline for that particular policy. And policy repeals, elimination of position, that is redundant and really the collective bargaining agreements really outline the elimination of a position and how that all plays out as far as movement of individuals within the district or layoffs. And then 3510, operation and maintenance of school facilities, this is a redundant and outdated policy. And really state laws and requirements, you know, are the places that we go to, to think about those things and, and our facility reviews and other reviews that we do, like roof reviews, tools for schools, there's just countless items that we are required to do. I, I don't think the reviews are a requirement, but that's something that we do in Farmington to ensure that we're proactively planning maintenance and facility upgrades on an ongoing basis through our operating budget and through our capital budget. Lending of equipment, this is outdated and no longer a practice for us. Lending equipment has a lot of challenges to it and it's not something that we do at this point. So for a variety of reasons, liability, other things, but that's also outdated. And there is the new policy, which is related to the Connecticut School Climate Policy, which is restorative practices response. And both the Connecticut School Climate Policy and restorative practices are effective July 1, 2025. So it's important for us to, you know, adopt these policies so that in summer school, we're adhering to these new requirements.
Questions, comments?
So I have a few questions. So for the Connecticut School Climate Policy under policy updates, there's no red line on that. So is that a new policy?
Which one? Sorry.
5131.911 and 5131.
Yes, that's brand new. That's the new law that I was speaking.
So why is it under the update section and not the new?
The, it's going to take the place of the bullying one. So it's an update to the bullying law and you'll, you know, we'll, we'll see that kind of fades away and this policy now takes its place. This is just how Shipman looks at it as far as policy updates. But because we already have a bullying policy, this takes the place of bullying policy, but we don't ever, we've never had a restorative practices response policy.
So the bullying policy is now like 5131.911 takes the place of another policy?
It's going to sunset another one, which is bullying because this whole school climate has to do with challenging behaviors and bullying.
Do you know what policy number it would take the place of?
I, I could find that out and I would come to the board with that in the future. I think we are, this is our first reading and we would, you know, talk about that. I'm actually waiting for Shipman to give a little more clarification on it, but this is how Shipman categorizes policy updates and new policies. It's just the way they did it. So we just, we just did what they had as far as what they provided to us.
Okay, and then it mentions a survey that's going to go out to, it's, let me see if I can find it. And within that, it says like there's going to be a school climate survey for the school year commencing July 1st thereafter. Can you explain that a little bit or who is that survey to and what, what information would be?
So the survey goes to all members of the school district, so families, students, faculty, staff. We already have a climate survey. We use that for strategic improvement. That's going to be released very soon and we do it in the spring of every year. And I would assume that you would do it in the spring of next year, this school climate survey.
Okay.
Then, and then that would then inform strategic improvement in the school development plans and our program development plan, just like the survey does today. And we've had a long history of doing surveys.
Is there a component of this where, so looking at the new one, the restorative practice response, you know, I like the idea of having something to reference and what we're going to do. Where I'm not seeing the other side of it and maybe I'm missing it, there's a lot of like information on like the child or individual who's being like removed or like the restorative action for and like all the resources that they're going, like available to them, which I'm not in disagreement of. But where do we have anywhere, what about the child that's being affected by the bullying? So like, is that child offered these same services of, you know, I highlighted something that I saw here, they're not limited to intervention, restorative process, therapeutic resources available, mental health support. I just want to be conscious of if there's a disruption or whatever, I mean, it could be anything, we don't have to talk specifics. There's, you know, a whole class of students or it could be a whole class of students, it could be a single individual who also have social and emotional needs based on whatever action took place. And I wasn't captured in here reading through it. It was a little dense and I have to admit that, I don't know if I got through it sufficiently. How is that captured or how if someone approached me and said, this is what we're doing for, to look at, you know, a process for the, the child that needs restorative action, how are we taking into account the child, other children that are being affected by this action?
Yeah, so if, if they're, I mean, before this law is even in place, we do that. So basically if there is a disruption in a classroom that rises to the level where students either had to be taken out or that student was taken out and it was disruptive enough that, you know, the teacher felt there had to be a conversation with students, the teacher can have that conversation. If the teacher feels like he or she needs or they need more support, then a mental health professional from our school would go into that classroom and help with that conversation or the principal might do that as well. So there are, those practices are pretty firmly in place. I think where we have challenges, and that was probably articulated earlier, is we also have a very high standard here in, at the federal level of FERPA, and that's always a challenge for us when it comes to a student confidentiality. And, you know, we, we can't always share everything that, with other families. So we're very careful about that, but certainly if we felt it was disruptive enough, a letter would go home, you know, potentially, but it would all depend on the situation. It, it would depend on the actual situation each time.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that we're not doing that now at all.
Yes, yes.
I just, I'm having trouble reconciling voting on something where I feel like there's two parts to this and I'm like, we're creating a policy or adding something for like one side of it, but I don't know if I, like to your point, it's both happening now, so shouldn't the other side of it somewhat be included in, in this? Again, that's just my first reading of it. I'm happy to take a look at any additional information that comes, but that was just kind of my initial response when I was reading through that. I do have a question on another policy too that was on here. The one for visitors, and I know it's mostly because of what you had mentioned, there was just one clause in there that was added that, I mean, this is really a total visitor policy, right? Not just for immigration authorities, like that's how I took this policy. So that line that was added that says like visitors upon arrival, security, I'm the biggest proponent of security measures and keeping the kids safe. But it says like, it was added in refraining from engaging with students and/or staff except as permitted by the school officials and consistent with the purpose of the visit in question. That just seems very not welcoming to me, honestly. I'm just going to be honest. So like if I, I'm not talking immigration at all, I'm talking just someone's in a school for a classroom event or something. The way that's taken by the letter of the law, it would be like you go to your child's classroom, you do not, you have blinders on, you don't look at anything. If you see your neighbor in the hallway, you're really not supposed to talk to them. That's how like honestly it reads to me. So I was just wondering why that particular like clause was added there.
Well, I think it's just generally on a security, safety and security side of things is to ensure that there are some kind of like outlines to people because it, I guess we always have to plan for the worst case scenario. If something were to not go well, we would reference back this policy and say, you know, your intent was to do this and then you did this. And very clearly in our policy, it says you should be doing this, you know, that type of thing. So I think that that is the intent of adding that language to ensure, you know, the safety well and wellbeing of all members of the school community. I, I certainly understand how you could, you know, feel like, ooh, that's harsh language. And I, I think that, you know, we are a school district that is very welcoming when it comes to families, but it also has to always, you know, safety is our number one priority and security. And so, you know, that language is in there, I think, in case something were to not go as planned, and then we can reference the policy as something that's very important and that, you know, all members of our community need to follow the visitor policy.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Just to clarify the question about the policy number, actually the current policy is actually the same number. So it is currently 5131.
So I got it right. Thank you.
Yes.
I knew they were sunsetting it.
So currently it's called bullying and safe school.
So it takes the place of it.
Of that.
That's why it's an update. It's taken the place of a current policy. Thank you, Dan.
No, you're welcome. I guess theoretically we could have just redlined the entire current policy and then just proposed this one on top.
I think it would have just been so complicated for them to redline the whole thing and start over. But I wasn't, I knew they were sunsetting the bullying policy and so I'm very happy that it was under updates because it's replacing the current policy.
I'll take a look. Thanks, Dan.
Oh, you're welcome.
Phil?
Yes.
I have a question on, on the restorative practice responses. Are the response times, like for example, if a student's removed, it's notifying the parents within 24 hours? Is that based on current practice or best practice recommendations from Shipman? Because I was just thinking about that, like if somebody's child's removed from the classroom, I would think you would want to notify the parent as soon as possible? Like if the, if the child went home and told their parent before the parent heard from the school, that could lead to, you know?
I would say like our practice is that we tell, we would call right away. I think Shipman is writing policies for, you know, something happens and it happens at the end of the day and they couldn't get ahold of the parent right away. So they're trying to give a little bit of room there, but typically, you know, But typically, you know, if we couldn't get ahold of the parent directly, we'd leave a message. We'd send an email. We would want to, and typically too, if the, if it was so disruptive at the end of the day, typically we'd want the parent to come pick up the child and not put the child on a bus or, you know, whatever that might be. But I think that's just a way that Shipman gives school districts, you know, the acknowledgement that not everything goes perfectly every single time. And there's, there's some time there.
Okay. Thanks.
Bill, I just want to add, I think to clarify, I think what, I have to lose my mind here. What Angela was saying is in the policy, it really talks about the challenging behavior. But the individuals or other individuals that were subjected to it, it does not talk about what support services that they have. So I think if I miss, is that clearly what you were saying?
Yeah. I mean, I know we're doing both of them. It's just, why do we, why are we only doing a policy on one side of it? I mean, there's two sides to this, whatever the issue is there. And I know we've gotten feedback about that and, you know, yeah, that is.
Yeah. So on the policy side, this was something that was required that Cabe wrote it. So I don't have a lot of flexibility on the policy. It's, it's written into law that we are to utilize Cabe's policy.
Can I just also comment? Restorative practices is meant to be holistic. It's a, it's a, it's a whole model. It's an evidence-based model and approach. And it does address not only the, I don't like to use these words, but the, the person who bullied, but also the person who was bullied. And it's also about the culture. And so if it's a whole classroom that's disrupted or anybody who's been impacted by the situation that occurred, these practices are to be implemented within that, anybody who was impacted by that. It's an approach. It's a, it's a very holistic approach to addressing behavioral health, you know, the incident and restoring the harm and doing that in a very, you know, a sort of therapeutic approach, a very, addressing everybody that was impacted by that. So it's, I don't, I know that, you know, that's, I don't, it might be good to share some of those, what that model looks like because it is a very much evidence-based intervention that is, that's very specific to how to address. It's not just about the bully. It's not, it's not just about the person who's causing the harm. It's about everybody who has been harmed.
Yeah. And I actually know that I'm reading the, reread this, the one number 11. It does say and see ensuring each student has a role in repairing relationships and reintegrating into the school.
It's a very effective model and approach. It really is. And I think, sorry, I'm just, I would go this. I think Farmington is ahead of this because we've done social emotional learning. Social emotional learning is one of those pillars in the restorative practices. And we're really ahead of that because it's.
Yes. I mean, we, this was something that a lot of what happens is to have the goal, the core documents we have. It really drives our, our practices and we, we try not to exclude students from school. That is a state priority. It's articulated to us that school exclusion is not the only strategy when students are exhibiting challenging behaviors. Restorative practices are one, like that's one of the interventions that we can, you know, utilize when a student has challenging behaviors. And when I describe the teacher talking to the classroom or a mental health professional or the principal, those are the types, that's what we were trained to do many, many years ago. And we continue that training as new people come on board because it's important that everyone be aware of that. That helps to de-escalate issues. It helps students to, you know, regulate their emotions, whether they're the students who watch this happen or the student who actually exhibited the challenging behavior. It also reduces harm if some harm was done. You know, it helps to heal and reduce harm over time. And so, and they're good strategies for life that students can learn. I know that at one of the, a really successful grant at Noah Wallace was the Peace Path. I used to use that as a principle in my own school. It's, it's a path that two students go on to try to repair harm when harm has been done. Those types of strategies are really powerful and they enable our kids to become independent problem solvers and understand conflict and resolution without having, you know, adult intervention every single time. And those are life skills. So, you know, we're, we were really fortunate to be early in the adoption of restorative practices. It makes it very easy to implement this new policy that takes the place of the bullying policy as that sunsets. And this is a more comprehensive policy that really articulates some new features that we will have and then some things that we already had in place. But we've already met with our DLC. We've gone over this. We're going to have Shipman and Goodwin do some training with everyone. So it's going to be, you know, well-planned on the implementation of, of all, of the requirements within the law.
Thank you.
Hey Kathy, would you be able to just clarify just a little bit more on the, on the training piece? Cause you said training multiple times, right? You said when you bring people on, new people on. And you just said that Shipman's going to do some, some ongoing training. Is there like any requirements for like how often that the faculty has to go through?
In some trainings, yes. The state has, this is my, I just, my pet peeve. That's why I need to become a lobbyist of some sort. I don't know. But the state likes to mandate training to teachers, to educators. It's one of the things that has been difficult in the course of my career to see PD time taken for more of a, like you just have to do it. It's compliance when it takes time away from the types of things we're talking about. Like we want to do restorative practices. It's not a mandate, but it's something that we think is very important for our students. It takes time away from the innovation side of our work. So we have many mandates for professional development. And, you know, it could be mandated reporting. It could be bullying training. We have every three years you do this, every two years you do this. So we have a whole system called Safe Schools that we have to update every year. And you experience some of that. Those trainings are online trainings that each teacher and each staff member, anyone who works with students, anyone employed within the school district, must take these certain trainings and they're pretty significant. As far as restorative, it's, you know, part of the induction process. We're really fortunate here in Farmington to be team-based. So when someone, no matter, you know, what certified position you take in Farmington, you're part of some team and that team is part of inducting you in kind of the daily practices of Farmington. But we also have school-based induction and district-level induction. And we're engaged in a project right now that Veronica is working on to update our induction programming because we want, you know, this idea of knowledge management. You want to make sure that when people come into the district with very specific core documents and a specific way of how we work with students and we put, you know, students at the center. We want those on, who are onboarding, coming into the school district to get really strong induction. And that includes things that Veronica and Eric will do and each principal does with their coaches. And then what the, the teacher's team does with them. And so there's a really nice, you know, wraparound to induct individuals. But it's a moment in time, I think, that we recognize. We want to update and make sure that, you know, when Veronica meets with a new teacher, because Veronica observes every new teacher. I observe every teacher attaining tenure. And we want, you know, when we're having that observation and discussion, you know, we're, we're looking to hear about what was induction like? What were the challenges? You know, what really helped? And we did see, because I'm doing four-year tenure observation right now. You know, it takes some teachers four years to become tenured. If you're transferring and already tenured in another district, it's two years. But for those four-year tenure teachers, they came during a very interesting time, which was COVID. And we couldn't get the substitutes to give them time to do district-level induction. It was really challenging. And so we're, we're reflecting on that and we're really trying to, you know, think about induction and try to create some new opportunities for student, for teachers. In the past, teachers who were first year in Farmington went on rounds, instructional rounds in their first year. It's like a very powerful learning experience. We weren't able to do that during COVID. We didn't have enough substitutes. If all of you are going to be on rounds, you're all new teachers. I need a substitute for each one of you. And if I don't have those substitutes available, which we had a shortage, I can't actually do that induction, which is so powerful for a new teacher. You know, it brings them to, you know, the district level and has them view things. And it just opens their mind to, to the ways in which we, you know, prioritize teaching and learning here in Farmington. So.
Thanks.
All set, everybody? Can I get a motion to approve the policy updates listed below for first reading as presented? 3514.1 disposal, I'm sorry. Yeah. Disposal of obsolete or surplus equipment materials, 1250 visitors, 1420 and 1420A, school security and safety, 5131.911 and 5131.911A Connecticut school climate policy and 6146 graduation requirements.
Motion second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Nay. Oh, I was voting nay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Next up is the policy repeals.
So I already went over those.
Yeah, right. Any comments, questions at all about that? Can I get a motion to repeal the policies listed below for first reading? 2152 elimination of position, 3510 operation and maintenance of school facilities and 3514 lending of equipment.
Motion second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, 5153 restorative practices. Can I get a motion to adopt policy 5153 restorative practices response for first reading?
Motion second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion, I should say? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay. Next up is the.
Just one other update for policies. Bloodborne pathogens. The administrative regulations were updated for technical edits from Shipman and we've updated those regulations on the website to reflect those changes.
All right. Item 7F, non-tenured teachers report.
Veronica? Kathy already previewed, she already previewed it a little bit because I was going to start off by just saying that this report includes two things. One, teachers who are being tenured at the conclusion of either 20 months of service or 40 months of service. So she's the two years and the four years that Kathy referred to. And you can see there that there's 39 teachers, which is a pretty high number. So again, referring to what Kathy was talking about before in terms of the onboarding and all the training that needs to happen, but these are some of our, these are people that came in during COVID. So it's even, it's even more impressive that they continue to, to be with us because that was a challenging time. But I also wanted to highlight something else from earlier in the evening, which was just what a celebration it is to welcome these 39 people onboard. You know, that, that, when he was really talking about that vision of excellence, you know, that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about teachers that we think are, you know, excellent, that we've had a chance to have here for two and four years that we're really thinking are contributing to this district, you know, contributing to our students' wellbeing and, you know, excitement about school. And so we're very excited about the teachers who are here. And I think that you should just know that this is a process that happens just by time. Like the people in the state of Connecticut are tenured by just achieving those many months in the position and being asked back that, for that next year. But here we really have a process where we ask principals, you know, you know, show, you know, let's celebrate, show, you know, bring us into a class. Sometimes I do them, mostly Kathy does them. But there were, have been a lot. So, you know, I've had a chance to do some of these observations of teachers. And so it's a real celebration when we go in and then we're able to talk to teachers afterwards to welcome them onboard and say congratulations for achieving this designation here. And so even though by statute it sort of accrues to them naturally, there is a process that feels very celebratory here. And, you know, just looking at those names that are on there, I'm very proud to have all those teachers be Farmington teachers here and have achieved that designation. So the other thing that is part of this report is several teachers who, for various reasons, we are suggesting for non-renewal. And I just want to go over those, those reasons because it's important to know. There's a variety of reasons why somebody might end up on this report. So one reason would be teachers who have part-time status and teach less than half-time. So that would be one of the reasons. Second is a one-year contract for a leave of absence of a regular teacher. So those aren't regular contracts or like a letter. And so those teachers would be on here. Long-term substitutes who have worked in an assignment for more than 90 days in a row. And then finally, teachers whom we are not renewing based on the professional judgment of the evaluator. So those are reasons why we, we, somebody might be on this report. These teachers, just so you know, were notified that the board has a statutory obligation to vote on this tonight. And they were told that this meeting was happening tonight. The teachers will also receive a letter tomorrow notifying of the decision that you make tonight, the action that's made tonight. So again, I want to just emphasize in this case that I've already enumerated the reasons why the board might take this action. But I want to make sure that this action should not be construed in any way based on a finding of incompetence or even poor performance of any of these teachers. So I just want to specifically point that out before you take this action. So I did want to list those reasons and then let you know that.
Any questions?
I think Veronica, you mentioned it. So these are not teachers for part B that you just were describing that were going for tenure and like didn't get it. This is a completely separate thing or is like, I'm trying to understand like the relationship here. So when you said, so it's a kind of a double question, the 39 that got tenure, did anyone not get tenure or everyone that tried to get tenure gets tenure?
Not everyone who, so tenure just accrues to you by time, right? So those are people that, you know, were here long enough. But I was describing how we also have a process that, you know, elevates that experience here. But certainly there are teachers for a variety of reasons that don't achieve tenure. So yes, you would see teachers on here that did not, that are not going to achieve tenure. They, these are, because if a teacher, once they achieve tenure, we're talking about a termination. So these are teachers, we're not talking about termination. We're just talking about a non-renewal here.
Okay. And then I don't know what was done in the past. So like obviously there's different reasons you said for part B. It could be a one-year contract. It could be a long-term substitute position. Do we try to, if it's obviously not a performance-based issue and it's something else, which we don't have to get into for any of these, I don't know. Do we try to put these people into other positions? Is that a goal of ours or not? Those are two separate like concepts. I'm just thinking of this wrong.
So if there is a position then that's available, then sometimes we do encourage teachers to apply for it again. So they would have to apply for that position and then they would be part of a process in order to get that position. But it wouldn't happen naturally for many of these teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve that the contracts of employment for teachers listed in section B of this report be non-renewed for the following year upon their expiration at the end of the current school year? And the superintendent be directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Motion second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Section eight, consideration of the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations report. Dan?
Phil, take a look. We have January and. We have our January and February financial statements. And, and right now, once again, we're trending very well. You'll see end of January was 21,000 and then February, I think it was 7, 8,000 in there. But we're not as concerned about that. I think what you start seeing now is as we get through January and February, we've halfway through the year, you start moving from looking at trend data to actual data, right? And so as you start getting into the actual data, you can start kind of getting, you know, you know, a better sense of how, where lines are going to end and where you're going to go. You know, there's accounts where we encumber. You know, there's accounts where we encumber money for anticipated expenses, but then we get to see where, where they go. And so, you know, the January to the February one, you know, some of those just come in where, once again, special services is probably the most volatile one, where, you know, sometimes we'll have a student who maybe is receiving specialized transportation, and as progress is, you know, that gets removed. And so the encumbrance that we took for that gets released. And so now we get some of that money back. But then all of a sudden, another student might qualify for, you know, an outplacement. And so now there, but the, the part that's kind of also important to know there is then when you have a student, let's, you know, I'll use an outplacement as there. At this point now, the outplacement isn't for 180 days, where now we're down to, you know, 40, so, so the hit isn't as, as much, right? So there's not these huge, wild fluctuations that are there. And so, like you said, it helps us kind of narrow down where we are. And then the other piece that, that you'll see on those pages is, as we, you know, excess costs grant is a, is a perfect example, where, you know, we're starting to apply those projected revenues to, to those pieces and, you know, kind of there. So based on, like you said, where we are, and where we are, you know, kind of through the actuals, and, and, you know, you still take a little bit of trending in there, we feel comfortable that, that we're on a good pace to finish the year well.
Any questions for Dan? Okay, great. Can I get a motion to approve the January financial statement report as presented?
Motion, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then can I get a motion to approve the February financial statement as report, financial statement report as presented?
Motion, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, up next, there's no executive session, so we'll go into the reporter committee chairs. Personnel, Andrea?
We have FVA negotiations coming up this summer. I know Central Office is gathering some information and just waiting to hear for when we're meeting.
Okay, policy?
Yep, as Kathy brought forward. We met last Monday and brought the recommendations forward that we voted on this evening, and we'll see them again for a second reading. No other updates, we don't have a standing meeting.
Thank you, Beth. Curriculum?
Our next meeting is April 28th at 5:00 PM.
And communications, Beth?
Nothing to report.
Okay. All right, I'm allowed to report a committee liaison's, correct? No report. Sylvie's not here, and I didn't get an update from her, so we'll just pass her. Superintendent's Interscholastic Athletics Committee, Andrea?
No report.
Farmington Public School Foundation, James?
Yeah, just a, just a quick update. We skipped our, our March meeting, or didn't have our March meeting, but it was right after the, the trivia B. We had another successful trivia B at the beginning of March, or the end of February. The, the group and the board is, is currently looking at, at ways to continue to expand it, obviously get more attendance, and, and increase the funding that comes out of it to support some, you know, pretty large grants that may be coming, uh, coming down the pike. So the board meets tomorrow, actually, to review current grants, the grant proposals, and should be voting on that tomorrow.
Thanks, James. Focus, Angela?
No update.
Cafeteria, Nadine?
Yes, we just met prior to the meeting today. Everything went well. One of the action items from the prior meeting was around reviewing the snacks for K through four. So they're going to, they've met, they've had discussions, and they're going to have a meeting specifically to review those snacks. So I think the recommendation was K through one, there would be no snack, two to grades two, second to third, yes. And they're looking at the actual nutrients in the, in the snacks. And then based on the elementary school principals, they'll decide what will be brought into for snacks.
Brought in from, brought in from outside?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's part of their core snack.
Snacks for purchases.
For purchases, yeah, sorry.
Oh, okay. So taking a look at.
Got it.
Yep.
You know, there was, there was a, we realized through the CAF advisory agreement that there was kind of this discrepancy across the schools. You know, some were allowing the purchase of snacks in first grade, some were allowing them until second grade. And so we agreed that they, they should all kind of, you know, follow a consistent pattern in there. So they, they met, they worked with Chart Wells and agreed to allow the purchase of snacks at second, third, and fourth grade. And then the next step is really kind of trying to come up with a consistent list of what snacks that they would allow for the purchase across the, the schools.
How come, what's the, what's the rationale by not allowing first and second graders to buy?
Well, it was really more the kindergarten first graders. What they were finding is, a lot of times, you know, they were, you know, just disregarding their, their regular lunches, you know, and going right to the snacks and, and.
As do I.
And I would just say, I think that Chart Wells done a great job with the diversity of the type of foods that they're planning each month and so forth, and also integrating with the FHS Transition Academy. And in March, they worked on kind of a, you know, having, offering certain meals available for sale for the teachers, and they delivered them and took in the money. And I think that's a great way, you know, to integrate into our school, into our school. And then lastly, I did talk about how can they integrate the culinary here at the high school in some of their planning in the future, and they were very open to that. That came out of today's meeting, is to look at opportunities as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Nadine. Great efforts, Marty?
Yes, April 26th is a town-wide cleanup. You can start collecting trash now, for then. There will be prizes collected from donated by Fork and Fire, Naples Pizza, Wooden Tap, Farmington Mini Golf and Ice Cream, and Bollywood Dreams. And they're going to split them into categories, so family, individual, community, and charitable contributions, or organizations, businesses, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and Democratic Party, and Republican Town Party.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we won't be there.
No.
We have a meeting that morning.
We do. We do.
But that's why we can collect ahead of time.
I'll save my sofa.
What's that?
I'll save the sofa.
Community Council for Equity and Inclusion, Erica?
We have a meeting on April 30th.
Thank you. Bethy, FHS building?
Yes, so the committee last met on March 19th, and we're pretty much down to once a month now.
Kind of coming to the end?
What's that?
Kind of coming to the end? More or less?
I suppose, and we're still paying invoices and last-minute things are last, you know, final things on here, on this building. But the 900 building?
Right.
We expect to get a tour for the committee, I think, for the next meeting or soon. I know that Kathy has been in there, and we have a better idea about the progress, and, but it's really coming along.
It's definitely a space that we could utilize for board meetings, too. We have more meeting space there, so that's something to think about for the future.
Cool. And we meet next Wednesday.
Thank you. Andrea, Superintendent's Search Committee?
Well, we had our presentation tonight from CAVE on the leadership profile. Applications are due tomorrow, so we'll be receiving them and reviewing them. And our next meeting is April 21st.
And that's, that, what time is that meeting? It's like at four o'clock, I think, right?
Four o'clock, I think, four.
Right, our goal is try to get out of there in time for the town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah.
And then we meet again on the 26th of April after that, right?
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-five, twenty-sixth.
Okay, right. Okay.
Busy week.
It's a busy week. Okay, which kind of thwarts my report of the board chair. I was going to say, we only have three more meetings left. In this school year. We'll have a fourth meeting, of course, when it comes time to select a superintendent. We'll have a special meeting for that. In terms of anything else, really not much to report. I do want to talk about briefly the stuff that we've seen in the news about correspondence with the federal government regarding school districts' compliance with various orders or regarding and around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We received guidance from the state of Connecticut that we've got an extension of time to respond to that. That's not a letter, by the way, that's addressed to us. It's a letter that's addressed to the state. The state is charged with accumulating data. So I don't have anything further for anybody at this point, other than to let you know that there was something in the news that we had to respond by this week that's been pushed back to the end of April. And the state of Connecticut's working on it, so we'll deal with it when the time comes. I have nothing else to report on, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.